Oh. That's how I felt yesterday. I was on life support yesterday, but I was chalking that one up 100% to Iowa City.
Did you get a little wet?
Oh, yeah. Ah.
Section A.
Yeah. I'm gonna just talk briefly on it. I'll let you dive into the details.
I always thought Tom Selleck had hair.
No, she's not gonna be here at all. Like, she's just getting out of the hospital. So, I'm just gonna talk like at a high level about where we're at, that we have an additional conversation, that we're looking at, you know. And that, yeah, that we'll continue to talk about it and we'll bring it up in the next meeting. Yeah, so I'll just hit it at a high. It's getting addressed, but without.
I don't know. I don't know if you want that, Gary.
All I said was Magnum P.I. was here. The mustachioed man that just walked away with no hair on his head.
Oh. The bald Tom Selleck.
Yeah.
We have a lot.
At least it's easy. We can go mustachioed Matt, bearded Matt, and clean shaven Matt.
Yeah, that's right.
You ready, Gary?
Yep. Rock and roll. Alright, go ahead and get started. Go ahead and call the meeting to order, our regular school board meeting for the month of November. Welcome, everybody. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I didn't see any amendments come through, so anything else?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And then, next item on their agenda is the approval of our West Delaware ABC group is gonna be presenting Fall Grant Awards. So, we'll invite the group up to the front, please.
Hello, I'm Stacy Borwald. I'm president of the WD ABC, and I'm here tonight with Ashley Jasper, our grant chair, and Jody King. And we will be handing out our grant awards, but we would just like to thank the community for their donations to our membership drive. That allows us to be able to do the teacher grants and some of the other projects that we fund throughout the year. So, our first... Our first grant is going to Kate Mejia for a weighted stuffed Highland cow and water bubble fish lamp.
Sure.
Get your award first, yes.
Our next award goes to Matt Siebold for vertical jump sensors.
I have to see how high you can do.
Yeah.
I'll put those in good use.
It's Matt. Hold on, hold on, you forgot your awards, though.
Our next grant goes to McKenna Kelly for Challenge to Change Guided Mediation. The next grant is going to Pam Colock for Fold Away Rest Matt. Our next grant is going to Martha Reynoso for rocking classroom chairs. Our next grant is going to Jake Voss for Television for the Weight Room.
The same people.
Next grant is going to Leah Lyons for an Amazon Echo.
I was gonna say you're the stand-in for Leah today. Yeah, thank you for mentioning.
Our next grant is going to Emily Crapple for lamps, punching bag, books, and sensory tools.
That's fun.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Our next grant goes to Roxanne Anderson for headphones, rocking desk chairs, classroom fidgets, and stress balls.
Thanks, Roxanne. Appreciate it.
Our next grant is for Kristy Emslin for Sensory Bend Materials and Filler.
That's a graduation.
Our last three grants are the cultural building activities for each of the three buildings, the high school, the middle school, and Lambert.
Thank you.
You can take the middle school one.
Thanks a lot.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, ladies. We appreciate everything the West Delaware ABC does. Thanks. Thanks for fundraising. Thanks for everything the community does to support this, and it's a great opportunity to fill the needs of what we have in our classroom, so. That's always a fun one. Alright, we'll move on to item number four. Actually, I didn't mention before we started off, I should've started off with this. The chair is empty today. Our superintendent is out sick under the weather, so just to call out why there's an empty chair sitting next to me, I meant to say that at the beginning.
And we will not hold a work session.
Yeah, we're gonna defer our working session until a time when Jen can participate in as well, so we will move on with that, so I meant to say that at the opening. Alright, we'll move on to item number four, our consent items. Any... Any questions about policies? Good group come out. So, one of the policies that we're updating this month is our policy 103, which is our long-range needs assessment. We've been doing a lot of processes recently to get ready for that, working with the PSYIC team, and that's actually part of what our working session is gonna be to fill out some of the activities around that, so timely update for that. Any questions? Anybody have? Looking through them? I thought they were pretty straightforward this month. I didn't really come up with anything.
Quite a few we just reviewed not too long ago.
Yes, no point. Were the bills updated this month?
Yeah, bills were.
Did that. Alright, thank you.
Of course, they were good.
They were.
Of course, they were good.
Some would even say perfect.
Some might say that.
I will move to approve the consent items.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. I'll move on to item number five, comments from the public. Any comments should be kept to please three minutes. The board will listen to any public comments, but be advised that we cannot comment or discuss any items not on the published agenda.
You have a student?
Oh, yes.
New? We haven't had this yet this year?
We haven't had that yet this year, so we will, we, your, is it reward for being here? Is we ask you to stand up and just share with us, you know, your name and then what your plans are for next year, if you know what they are. If not, you can tell us you don't know.
I'm Jayden Hillers, and my plan is to go to Allen College for nursing.
Awesome. Every, every month, now that we're in the swing of the school year, we have a lot of government students that show up to participate. Any other comments from the public? We'll go ahead and move on to our Friends of Music update.
The Friends of Music organization met Wednesday, October 15th, High School Commons. Some of the main topics discussed were the fundraising and its progress for the New York City trip. Dinner show on the horizon, purchases for dinner show, discussion on membership drive, looking at new concert dresses, the new audio board installation, and some over-the-ear microphones. Let's see. And then, under the speech department, the season, they were looking at some new storage boxes for speech. We just had the last of the musical performances here this past week, so there's a lot yet coming down the pipe here in the next six weeks, so the next meeting will be, I don't think it's this one.
Thanks, Rob. Any questions? Otherwise, we'll go on to the athletic boost.
You might have seen in Mr. Weiss's report, they did not meet. They will meet two nights, Wednesday night, in the conference room here inside the school at 6:00.
Great, thanks. And academic, any more update besides the great update we got to start the meeting with?
Other than that, they will not be having a meeting in December. Their next meeting will be on January 7th at 6:00 in the High School Commons.
Thanks, Rob. Okay, alright, with that, we'll move to our second reading of policies. Questions there?
I'll move to approve second reading of policies.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Carried. Alright, we'll move on next to the administrative director reports. I know in the superintendent report, there's a number of areas around goals. The Gen Ed, we made a lot of progress around the strategic planning, and some of the areas I mentioned at the beginning will be continuing to work that on our working session. So, the report was a deep dive on our certified enrollment. I don't know, Lynette, if you have any kind of comments you wanted to just fill in there?
I mean, I'll just be honest, 50 was a big drop. We weren't expecting 50. Every conference that we've been at, every meeting we've been at, we are getting told that that's kind of, that's gonna be the norm going forward, so between, people are having less kids in Iowa, charter schools, parochial schools, the, you know, the ESAs, all that is taking a hit in public education, and so this is gonna be a trend that we're gonna see. Jen and I are already diving in. There's different ways we can, you know, make things work, and we're looking at all the different angles and seeing, you know, we've got some low-hanging fruit that doesn't affect staffing, doesn't affect students, doesn't affect, you know, anything like that that we can look at first, and I think this is just a big, a big start on when we have our legislative session coming up here in a couple of weeks, and when they all get back in session, you know, 1% SSA doesn't cover it. We will be on a budget guarantee, and we've talked about that multiple times at this table. We weren't there last year, this current year, which is nice, but we will be anytime that we have that big of a drop, and so, you know, we just need to keep pushing them a little bit, that we need more than that 1% or 2%, and we'll have multiple conversations over this. It was, we were expecting a drop, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna act like this was a big surprise. The 50 was a big surprise. We were hoping more in the 30 range. And so, not the end of the world. We'll make it through. I think in public education, we always find a way, and this will be no different, so we'll continue to find a way, and we'll turn over every stone we have and find the money to make that work, but there will be continuous conversations over the next, you know, four or five months as we go through the process of how does it look and how will it affect the budget, and how will, how does it affect taxes down the road, you know, when we bring up the tax presentation, so.
Well, and the key implication of that is the number of students we have in our enrollment times the rate, that's what determines our funding. That's why this is such a key important factor.
Yep, yep, 100%.
On the certified enrollment, does that include St. Mary's students?
It, yes and no. So, it does not include St. Mary's because we don't get, we don't get money for them. You'll see on her second slide where it says ESA-funded students, that is ESA, you know, the slang word for it, if you wanna call it voucher. And you can see we went from 163 kids to 224. This was the first year that they opened it up, so there was no income parameters on that, and so every, I'm not saying that everybody at St. Mary's applied for it. You still had to apply for it, so I don't, I don't know if every single student there applied for it or not, but it does take, took away those parameters, so that number went up by 61 for kids that were getting those. That doesn't mean...
Only for that line item.
That's only, yeah.
We don't get anything for the normal student.
Nope, nope. And we won't get, you know, when you look through her chart and you're looking at your different grades, you'll see that big jump between sixth and seventh, of course, because with St. Mary's kids coming over here. I will say, you know, we work very well with St. Mary's, and 99% I would say of the St. Mary's kids do come to West Delaware. We lose very few, and I think that might even be in one of her charts possibly, but we lose very few to other parochial schools outside of St. Mary's, once they get into the high school age.
I think I saw on the...
Like four, maybe?
Facebook or someplace, they had like 35 kids for kindergarten at St. Mary's. That seemed like a very high amount for what they used to have, so I'm wondering, are we losing more kids because they're growing, or?
I know, you know, I can't speak for St. Mary's, but I know that, you know, they're doing what they can to get as many kids as they can as well.
But we, eventually, we see them.
I mean, if you look, the red numbers on that presentation, it goes from 88 to 116 from sixth to seventh grade, so there's 28 kids who showed up in seventh grade this year.
This year. The problem we run into is, yes, we get them, but for those first seven years, you know, kindergarten through sixth grade, we don't, we don't have them.
Any questions around the enrollment package, you know, presentation materials? They use a really good job of laying that out. Has a lot of...
I think one of them, one of the important things, too, if you look real quick, you know, one of the things we've been fighting is our open enrollment, and that, that has, the gap has shortened a little bit, not a lot, not dramatically. I know Jen and I think Mr. O'Loughlin has worked hard about some of our students that were leaving us to go to online school, so we don't offer it to anybody and everybody but our own students. If an online program is a better option for them, we now have something set up so that we can do that, and so I know that they've brought in some back and kept some from going to an online program at Olwine or Clayton Ridge because Mr. O'Loughlin and Jen had worked together to say, hey, we can create something here and try and keep these kids here so that we can still get the funding for them and serve them locally, so I think that's a, that's a big plus right there, too.
Very much.
On that, paying attention to where these kiddos are going and what can we do to help stop that a little bit.
Didn't really have a question to any of the building admins, but more of an observation. It's kinda neat seeing the trickle-down effect in the scoreboards of subgroups upside of just the main building, so it's really nice to see everybody kinda implementing that 4DX and the...
The wildly important goals.
Yep, and seeing how the, how they're kinda making things work with that, so it's good to see.
No, I agree. I like, I like the high school, Matt, your example that you gave with Mr. Green, just showing how you're even tactically getting down into that level. I thought that was really, really cool. One question I just had, maybe for you or actually any of the building leaders, was, you know, what things are you doing to make your wildly important goals and the status visible to your students, administrator, everybody at the building, so that it's there and it's visible?
Yeah, so ours isn't really like posted physically up, but it's a shared doc that anyone has access to. They can go in and check to see what other groups are doing, or anyone on those teams can take a look at them and kinda track, so they meet weekly, and then they update their scorecards weekly, but then also they're shared with everyone who can take a look and see how things are going.
At the middle school, if you actually come into the building, on the second floor, you can see sixth grade's weekly attendance, so they have just a whiteboard that we put on some lockers, and at the end of the hallway, fifth grade has their scoreboard for the students to see. Seventh grade is working on theirs as well as eighth grade, so they're, they spent last Wednesday, kind of, they don't really have time to get out in the hallways and do that very often, but, so that's what they did last Wednesday as they got out and got their bulletin board, draw, white erase boards kind of up so that the students can see it. We are gonna work on sharing those with our parents at some point as well, whether we do that via Facebook or School Messenger, so they're aware as well.
At Lambert, it's pretty similar to what it is at the high school. It's a shared, shared docs and people that have access to it. We were discussing just tonight at our BLT meeting about the idea of publicly displaying those as the material shares and thinking about what that would look like, but at the elementary level, too, we think about, well, sometimes when we post things, and it reflects a negative side, too, and, you know, we tend to be a little more sensitive about that at the elementary level, but we'll figure that out, but some teachers, though, are sharing it and posting it within their classroom, not individual goals. We haven't got to that point yet with students, but we're moving in that direction, but within the classroom, it's posted for some students.
Well, Rudy, while with you, I was curious, I mean, it's great to see the, you know, you talked about it last month, you know, the ODRs and all the improvement that you've seen. I'm just curious, kinda, your assessment of what's the, have you seen a change in how the building feels to you or the administration, or kinda give me a sense of what it's like at the...
We were discussing that, too, at BLT, and recently surveyed the teachers, asking the question about, why do you think this is working, and, and what we feel about it is the consistency across the building. If you think about an elementary student, even though they have one Gen Ed teacher, one homeroom teacher, they are still exposed to at least five different classrooms. Well, now, this year, for the first time, the expectations are the same in all of those classrooms, and when you look at a student who's being pulled out, whether it's for special education or Title I, they may go to as many as nine different classrooms in the course of a week to get their services, so again, having that consistency across the building has been, has been huge for students. Teachers are also telling me that they're more intentional about addressing things as the plan requires right away while it's small, and so what we're noticing is those little things that at times in the past would grow into bigger things, that's just not happening as much as it used to, and that's where we're seeing, I think, the significant reduction in ODRs because it's being taken care of while it's a little thing, it doesn't escalate, and so those ODRs aren't written at all. We feel strongly, too, about that, too, because it's, it's less distraction in the classroom. And talk about the field in the building, yeah, I mean, we're, it's reduced the number of calls for assistance at Lambert. Things aren't blowing up in the classroom and then going out into the playground or coming into the lunchroom, you know, as much as it used to. We haven't eliminated everything, but...
You never will, but...
You know, but I was pretty anxious to see the numbers for the, for October, to see if it would continue.
Like a surge, if it was a one-time surge, or if it's sustained, that's great.
We're feeling really good about that, and that success, too, is driving teachers' commitment to the program, which is huge, because you can put any program you want in place, but if you're not implementing it, if you're not doing it, if you're not following through, and the success we're having is really motivating to teachers, and their, our fidelity is pretty good.
That's great. Congratulations. Carol Lawson, I did have one question. I was looking through your report. I appreciate how you summarize the, the different progress reports, you know, from strengths and needs. I really like how you laid that out. I guess, I'm curious, kind of, what you see next as, kinda, next steps with this? Where, where do you go with this? What's your, you know, whether you've got things already planned out or kinda what's your plan to create actions out of that?
No, we're in the process, Jen and I are in the process of looking at these needs and opportunities for growth, and how are we gonna address these with each building and the building principals, so we're in, that's in process right now, and we'll have, next month, we'll have some more.
Next month will be when you come back.
Hard pass planned for.
Questions, or?
The great reports this year.
Yeah. Super good. I do, I do appreciate the format. I'm hoping it's easier for you guys to, I think, try and standardize around some of that, so I think it's working out well for us, so thanks for that. No more questions? We'll go ahead and move on. Number eight, no old business, so we'll jump into number nine, 9A, approving the Keystone ADA Director District Ballot. So, we have one choice.
Yep.
So, I'm assuming we will vote for our one choice and move forward.
Is this what Ed had done?
Yes. Yep, Ed had done this. Yep. I think it was cool that West Delaware had a representative.
Is he, he's no longer.
He's off.
This was his seat.
Yep. We're approving the ballot, right?
Yes.
This is not an actual vote. It's just the approval of the ballot.
Yep, so then Steve will sign the ballot and we'll send it into the AA as our, as our vote for the director.
So, this is kind of our vote?
So, yes, you could say no if you had an issue with the person that is running. You could vote no, that you don't want her, or do a write-in, but her name's the one on the ballot.
I move that we approve the AA.
I'll second that.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. If you voted no, Carl, your name was going on there as a candidate, so.
Probably, probably Jamie coming off.
Why Jamie's voted yet?
Alright, item... All right, item 9B, our approval of our furniture quotes for the High School Commons.
Okay, so I'm gonna just kinda touch base on this a little bit. Mr. Weiss, Mr. Savari and I and Jen have been, this turned into what was a little quick idea that we need to make some, some noise and some wow factor in the High School Commons, kinda turned into a long, a long process, but we got to a place where we feel really awesome, we're super excited about it, and so we're bringing it to you guys tonight. I will say that Mr. Savari, Mr. Weiss and Jen did go and actually visit a school, I was out that day, so I cannot go with them, so they've seen the material in person, they've checked the quality. We've got two quotes, when you're talking $125,000 project, we are within $1,500, I think it's 1,586 between the two. Our recommendation is going to be, or to you guys is to, typically we go with the lowest quote. In this case, we are going to recommend approval of the Honey Creek quote for two reasons. The biggest reason is there, as you look at their picture on the front, the front left is the design, is how it's gonna look. Those four-person, I think are called rally tables, the high-top four-person tables, their product actually has a 10-year longer warranty, so the one with Duette Resource Group is a five-year warranty on theirs, and the one with Honey Creek is a 15-year. We have nine of those tables, so that's, it's pretty substantial, and then to add to it, Honey Creek is local right here in town, so, you know, we, we'd like to do as much local as we can, and since it's right around just that 1% mark, and we've got an extended longer warranty on the product, we are recommending that we move forward with Honey Creek.
And they were same product?
Apples to apples, yep.
Okay.
Yep, we compared all of it. Same number of logo tables, same number of, you know, four-person high tops, same number of long ones, same number of stools versus chairs versus bars, you know, the bar top size, so yeah, apples to apples as far as the actual content of the product.
What did you decide to do with the bump out?
We took the bump out away from it at this point, we thought, after having conversation, there was multiple design thoughts, processes, we have some furniture here at the high school still that we're gonna maybe bring out and see how that looks, we thought, let's get this done first, that will be a small, I mean, that was anywhere from $5,000 to $8,000, and so let's get this in first, let's see what kind of color do we need, where do we need it, is this busy enough, do we wanna add more, and then kind of we'll reconvene at that point and see, you know, how do we wanna do it? We're still gonna do it, we're absolutely gonna finish that, you know, little cubby area out as well, we've got a graduating class that wants to donate money for like this massive TV to go in there, and so we'll, it'll still be, it'll still be fun, but we decided to just keep it to the Commons furniture first, get that done, and then see what we've got, see what we need in there.
Just for clarification, this is coming out of Pepper and Save?
Yep, so this will be coming out of our Save account, I think that's, that's a very good point, you know, we talked, 20 minutes ago, we talked about decreasing enrollment and budget, conversations starting, these are funds that we cannot use on staff, so these are funds that by state code, we are required to use for building upkeep, for furniture, for maintenance, for buses, for those types of things, so yes, this money is coming from that, and even if we wanted to at this point, unless they changed Iowa code, we're not allowed to use these for anything general fund, anything educational, no.
After watching the musical, tear down and put together and all that stuff Thursday, how easy is all this stuff gonna be moved?
I'm actually gonna let Mr. Weiss test to that, cause he's, he's kinda the one that moves it around right now.
So, everything basically in the terms of tables, like the four-person high-top tables and the long tables, and the higher light conversation tables are all on wheels, they're lockable wheels, they can all just be moved. The four-person tabletops, so all the seats are attached, so they just swing in and out and they lock down. The only things, the round booths are also all on wheels, so those can be just tilted back and moved. The only things that wouldn't be, would be some of the, their stools on two of the higher-top tables and chairs, and then the smaller chairs around the tables around the booths, so there would be roughly 30-ish, 36, somewhere around there.
36, I think.
Yeah, 36 of those seats that would have to be moved, but part of our thoughts is too for, is like some of those booths and stuff, kinda arrange those to a way that we really won't have to move those, and so the stuff that we do move will, should be easily because they're just all on wheels.
And I do think, just to mention as well, we do have handicap accessible spots as well.
I know in the Commons right now, it's pretty much a generic table and chair, is there gonna be like specified areas for seniors, juniors, freshmen, sophomores, or the first come, first served?
Think we'll be able to utilize the old tables somewhere else in the district?
Maybe, yeah, I don't know, we haven't really addressed that, so I don't know, we, you know, we do have a sale every spring, so it might end up going on the sale, and maybe another school could come and buy it, or, you know, something like that, we'll just have to see.
Some of the tables are, they're just starting to show where to, they're from the same, you know, the high school building.
That addition?
Oh, nine.
So, yeah.
Not even the welding class can put them back together.
What's the timeframe on completion of this?
I believe it'll be about 12 weeks or so.
I will say too, just to go on record, I know Mr. Weiss and Mr. Savari, they met with some students as well when we first started having this conversation about how do you want this to look, and you like this kind of seating or that kind of seating, and so we did take student input in as well, like, how do you, you know, how do you guys think this looks, do you want more of these kind, you want more of that kind, so they're pretty excited, and the ones I've talked to about it personally are pretty excited, like, when's it coming, can we be part of it, and yeah, so they're excited. I think it'll be nice. If you think about our Commons, it is the most widely-used spot in our entire district, you know, between all of your elementary concerts or in the, you know, in the auditorium, all your sporting activities, all your weekend stuff, people rent the gym, they rent the auditorium, you have, you know, concerts, all that kinda stuff, everybody comes in there, and you think of when you go to other schools, I mean, I can't tell you how many schools I've walked into and gone like, whoa, this is, this is where they eat lunch, that's what we're going for, we wanna, we want people to walk in and go, wow, this is really cool, and that, the layout of that room is cool, I mean, we've got the skylights, we've got, you know, a lot of the stuff going on, we've got the murals on the wall, like, we've got the starts of it, we just need to spruce it up a little bit and get some of that, you know, awesome furniture and, and kinda take it to that next level.
I'm excited, it's gonna be awesome. Well thought out. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for all the hard work.
I'll move to approve the furniture quote from Honey Creek Furniture.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
She carried. All right, number 10, second round, comments from the public. Seeing none, we'll move on, item 11 is our future board, Board of Education meetings and opportunities, so we, we do have a couple upcoming, on the 24th, we have a joint session with the legislators where we, together with other school boards and host the legislators, we're actually hosting them here this year.
Yep.
So we're excited for that.
Here, here at the high school.
On the 24th, in the library, or?
Yep, yep, we'll do it here in the library.
Okay, great, and then we'll have, we have our pre-meeting on Friday, December 5th, Mr. Ward, I think you're at that this month, and then our next meeting has a different start time, we're actually starting at 5:00 o'clock instead of 6:00 o'clock on December 8th.
Through the concert.
Concerts. I think that was a Carlism, they got... Yes, I've missed many because...
We tried, Carl, we're trying.
Returning the balance here. Wonderful, okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.